We're live. Ah, very good. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Environment Housing and Communities Scrutiny Board for September. I'm Stuart Galton. I'm chairing the meeting today and I am a councillor for Rothwell and I'm going to begin the introductions. First of all, we will have the fellow board members and most importantly, Becky Atherton.
Hi, I'm Becky. I'm the principal scrutiny adviser today.
Morning, I'm councillor Norma Harrington from Wetherby Ward.
Councillor Barry Anderson, Adlington Ward.
Councillor Simon Sery from the Putsey Ward.
Councillor David Blackburn, Farnley and Wortley, substituting for councillor Stables.
Good morning, everyone, and lovely to see you full house today at this meeting board. Councillor Asgak on council for Birmingham Richmond Ward.
Morning, councillor Javid Akbar, London Woodhouse and City Centre Ward.
Good morning, councillor Adrian McClosky for Farnley and Wortley.
Morning, everybody. Councillor Andy Rontree from Kirkstall Ward.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Abdulhanan Headingley in High Park.
Morning councillor Annie Maloney, Beaton and Holbeck Ward.
Good morning councillor John Tudor from Kilinbecon Seacroft Ward.
Thank you very much. So our guests now know who we are and I open the floor to our guests to introduce themselves, starting with councillor Eileen Taylor.
Good morning, I'm councillor Eileen Taylor and chair for the Yorkshire Police and Crime.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Deborah Cooper, I'm the executive board member for resources, strategy and community safety and deputy leader, leads to council.
Morning, everyone. I'm Nadeem Siddique, head of community relations and cohesion.
Morning, everyone. I'm Jude Roberts. I'm the safeguarding and domestic abuse manager for safer stronger communities.
Morning, everybody. Simon Hodgson, head of Community Safety Services in the safer stronger communities too. Thank you.
Oh. I'm Magdalena Boo, newbie, and I'm the head of public health for drugs alcohol safer communities.
Good morning. My name's Kev Brighton and I'm currently the lead of the antisocial behaviour teams across Leeds.
Morning, everybody. Lucy Ledbetter, I'm the chief inspector with the partnerships portfolio for Leeds district. Please in.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Chief Superintendent Steve Dodds, I'm the Leeds district commander for West Yorkshire Police.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Julie Reed, head of policing and crime in the mayor's policing and crime team and I'm representing the deputy mayor of policing and crime this morning.
Morning, everyone. Wendy Stevens, I'm the research and performance manager for the policing and crime team at the West Yorkshire Combined Authority.
Good morning, Jonathan Pickles. I'm also from the police and crime team, a lead on policy and performance.
Good morning, everyone. Policy manager, also in the policing and crime team at the West Yorkshire Combined Authority.
Thank you very much. You're all very welcome. We're going to start off with the formal part of the agenda first before we get to the items that you're all here to share with us. Over to you, Becky.
Item one, there are no appeals against refusal of inspection documents. Item two, there are no items today listed as excluded from the public domain. Item three, there are no late items. Item four, can I ask members of the board to declare any declarations of interest in accordance with Leeds City Council's code of conduct? I will take silence as none. Apologies today. We've had apologies from councillor Stables, councillor Blackburn is substituting and councillor Graham. We've also had apologies from James Rogers, Alison Low and Paul Money.
Thank you, Becky. That's the formal aspect through. We'll go on to agenda item number six. Minutes. There are a few matters arising. Just to confirm publicly, we were asked to provide nominees for the community committee's review. Those have now been confirmed as myself and councillor Barry Anderson. And at minute twenty-three, we have had an investigation very recently about raid on gas in presence in council homes and there was an agreement that an inspection of properties would take place through the council and it's just to confirm that members are happy with having a, an update at a later meeting, probably in December. Okay. All done. Item seven, just for our guests, it's just to note that there is an item here just for information, but we've included it on this agenda because it is associated with community safety and it is the report from the ombudsman around antisocial behaviour. And our guests will know, I've already pointed it out to board members, there are a list of questions that are provided on page forty-six of the agenda or twenty-six of the actual report itself, which are helpful for elected members in the pursuit of antisocial behaviour queries to avoid complaints having to go to the ombudsman and that they are properly addressed within localities. And I hope that's useful information for everybody here today. Now we'll go on to the other items and we have item seven, the West Yorkshire Police and Crime Plan. Now I do know that we have Chief Inspector Lucy Ledbetter here, Julie Reed and councillor Cooper, who will all wish to provide introductory comments because it's a very significant document and you will each have your own perspectives on it. Can I start with councillor Cooper?
Well, can I suggest you actually start with the officers, councillor Galton, seeing as it's the police and crime plan that they're here to speak to and then I will come in as and when I need to.
As you wish councillor Cooper, I was just following plasma. So let's go to Chief Inspector Lucy Ledbetter.
If I may, as the Leeds district commander, I'll, I'll take this item if I can, please. So in terms of the, the update from the, the board, it's been a challenging year. I think we can all, all accept and, and understand that. Our delivery and a lot of our problem solving and approach work is based around our neighbourhood policing teams and we have some strong representation within, in communities from those teams, although it is fair to say that we have had some challenges over the, over the last twelve months around resourcing and, and getting the right people into those roles because of the, the national uplift programme. I am pleased to say though that we are, we are starting to, to change that, that position and we have seen an uplift, two separate uplifts coming into neighbourhood policing in the, in the, the recent months of an additional twenty officers in total that are going into those areas. And that's also on the back of an uplift of seventy patrol officers, the frontline response officers that are going into policing. So a massive step in the right direction. And in terms of where we are around key elements of the, the plan itself, in terms of overall recorded crime, as of Monday of this week, overall recorded crime in Leeds has reduced by two thousand six hundred and twenty-three offences. There are some key offence types that are concerning and will form part of our focus and, and work over the, over the coming year as well. Violence with injury has reduced by two point six percent, but violence without injury has increased by three point six percent. Robbery of personal property, we've seen a nine point eight percent increase across the, the city and theft from motor vehicles. Sorry, theft from motor vehicles, an eleven percent rise in those offences. Other areas of concern are most serious violence. We have seen a, an uplift or an increase of eight point one percent. A lot of that is based around the issues in the east of the city that we've seen. We have had five murders this policing year of young people related to bladed weapons across the city, which is concerning. But a real focus of, of ours. In terms of some key areas then, so antisocial behaviour and public order. A key change in the last twelve months has been the introduction of problem solving in neighbourhood meetings or spin meetings. These are led by Dan Wood, who is my superintendent for the partnerships and neighbour policing teams. They're held every six weeks and they're designed now to drive problem solving activity around identified locations and to, and to bring a bespoke solution and approach to those. We look for the most demanding vulnerable harm causing places over that period. The Leeds antisocial behaviour team are a key asset on that meeting and we also involve our missing people coordinators, mental health liaison and domestic abuse integrated offender management colleagues. The work's backed up by daily reviews of our ASVAT system, which talks around antisocial behaviour and public order issues and they're reviewed by our neighbourhood support officers in, in each of the three localities across the, the district. We did see some, some threats last year in Holton Moor and we continue to see an improving picture there. Operation Dig Part was saw a large number of people prosecuted for their role in, in bonfire related disorder last year as well. And Hurst Yard, which colleagues will probably be aware of, is, was a significant concern and saw a really excellent approach in the city centre from, from partnerships with a problem solving approach and has, has been recognised on a national level as well as across the county with awards for the work there and seen some fantastic reductions. Our off-road bike team has gone from strength to strength in the last twelve months. We have seen an additional six police community supporters, officers added to that team to give a total of twelve. I'm also looking to increase that further as we move into this year with some additional police officers. And I've been supported by Leeds City Council for some, with some additional funding for equipment and servicing of the motorcycles there, which is really helpful. The main focus of our ASB and public order work over, over the last six months has been the east side of Leeds. Our dedicated neighbourhood policing team in there continues to work on a clear whole build partnership in the area. Up to press from the work that they've done, they have executed thirty-one drug search warrants in the area of the clear whole build partnership initiative, making thirty-five arrests and that continues to be a, a focus for us going forward, particularly in relation to some of the youth violence that we're seeing in the area. My neighbourhood impact team, which are the proactive arm of neighbourhood policing are permanently in that area as well at the moment because of the problems that we've had in that area. Domestic violence and abuse through daily risk assessment meetings with our partners in, in social care. The police discuss latest cases. Front door safeguarding hub has seen a thirty-three percent increase in Clarence Law referrals, which is a recognition that those DRAM meetings need to be proactive in this regard. And we, whilst we're seeing an increased demand and it's challenging in that sense, it's the right and proper thing to do through those to support and protect our victims. We have recently recruited a detective constable into a new role of embedding learning officer. And that's an officer that's got extensive experience in child safeguarding and will focus on the lessons learned from the rapid reviews that we've had around child death and child serious injuries in the, in the last twelve months and as we go forward. And just to really bring all of that together from a domestic abuse point of view, we have delivered a significant amount of bespoke training to all our frontline officers. And that's covered the Leeds partnership learning around the rapid reviews, but also the domestic homicide reviews that we've had in the the past ten years, twelve in total. Hate crime. After a notable rise in hate crime last year, we have seen a three point three reduction this year, investing further in this area. I've appointed an additional four hate crime coordination officers to take the total to seven across the district. And changes are being made to our ASB meetings to incorporate crime, hate crime into, into those. Strategic engagement officers continue to work across the partnership and communities and, and that is starting to build trust and, and hopefully prevent significant community tensions. We also now have a dedicated inequalities officer who is working as part of our response, as part of the National Police Race Action Plan as well. Drugs and substance use then, we continue to utilise custody based drugs testing. Over the past year, we've conducted tests on two thousand seven hundred and thirty-six arrested detainees. Fifty-eight percent of those tests were positive for cocaine or other opiates. So that shows that drug misuse and is, is significant within some of the offending that we're seeing coming through our custody suites. I've mentioned our neighbourhood improvement team already, but they continue to work alongside the, the neighbour policing teams in general to conduct drugs activity, particularly at dealer level. We had a recent incident in the north west of Leeds where we seized four million pounds worth of drugs from a suspected Albanian organised crime group. And that's an excellent example of our efforts in this regard. Hare Hills has been a particular focus of our work around tackling drug supply. Operation Baked Green is a, a recent operation that, that finished a few weeks ago that saw eight hundred and ninety cannabis plants, a hundred and fifty-six separate deals of cannabis, seventy-six grams of cocaine, over five hundred grams of ketamine, twelve kilograms of, of other bagged cannabis, methamphetamine and excess of fifty-four thousand pounds worth of cash seized and ongoing work within our proceeds of crime team to look at asset recovery around that as well. And in terms of offending behaviour, our early help liaison and diversion team are strong. They're embedded with systems that we use to great effect to support and divert offenders and families. We've recently again conducted some training for frontline officers, how they can refer families into support services. And in terms of our integrated offender management team, our Leeds reducing offending board has been restructured and relaunched with a number of subgroups that work into it to tackle issues relating to reoffending. Organised crime and street gangs, I, I alluded to this when I was talking about some of the key crime areas a few minutes ago. And it has been a massive priority for us over the last twelve months and remains so. And with building on our existing framework of serious organised crime and urban street gangs meetings, we've invested and supported again by, by Leeds City Council with matched funding to place a dedicated sergeant at the work in the front door safeguarding hub to coordinate partnership activity towards youth violence. And that is already starting to see some fantastic results. That's bringing some of the, the lessons and good practice that have been learnt both locally and nationally around dealing with domestic abuse and serious sexual offending into youth violence and trying to tackle that and, and also as well trying to move into a, a sphere of treating perpetrators not just as perpetrators, but also looking at the social care aspects and vulnerable families elements around that. So that, that continues to be a fantastic piece of work and a great opportunity for us. We've also created a dedicated team within the CID at Ellen Road under the name of Operation Bronstoke. The, the officers that work in there do specific work around violent crime, youth violence and review every incident within twenty-four hours to look at opportunities to try and maximise our outcomes and interventions in those areas. Education is really, really key within this and we, we've developed a head teachers working group to, to improve the submissions of information and intelligence from across our partners via our partnership intelligence portal. We've seen a seventy-eight percent increase in submissions to that intelligence portal from partners over the last twelve months, which is really positive. And we continue to, to drive and push out our PLED systems and, and processes to, to schools. And actually the uptake of the PLED programme is the highest in Leeds for all of the West Yorkshire authorities. With nearly a hundred percent of all secondary schools now signed up to that, there is one that is yet to sign up. Exploitation and radicalisation, Leeds has a strong cohort of a hundred and one prevent champions. These are officers and staff specially trained to understand signs of vulnerability of those who may be exploited or radicalised and, and raise this awareness within our wider networks, both within policing and beyond. They receive regular inputs and, and continue to develop their understanding and knowledge and, and vital support in that area. We work very closely with our colleagues from North East Counterterrorism Unit as well and to deal with, with issues across the, across the, the city and and deal with those as, as appropriate. People with multiple needs, we continue to use public protection notices in conjunction with adult and child so, social care. These are a formalised process through police systems that allow us to refer directly into those systems for persons that are in vulnerable situations. Recently, we've sought to expand the knowledge with, across the policing and within our partners around risk outside of the home and our dedicated sex working liaison officers continue to work with partners such as Basis and the Joanna Project to safeguard the most vulnerable victims from harm. Violence and sexual crime, gang related violence is an ongoing concern and we, the force continues to, to put resources in the form of Operation Gemlock into the city on most evenings to support the work of local officers. And there are a number of medium to long term ongoing efforts, as, as I've already alluded to. In terms of sexual offences and violence against women and girls, we're working to a force strategy. Ask Angela and Safe Spaces are examples of initiative we've adopted in this area. And just finally, some other ongoing challenges and pieces of work at the moment. The city centre is a, a key focus for us. It's an attractive environment for young people, particularly leading to issues of crime and disorder. The neighbourhood policing team air inspector for the city centre inspector Tierney is working closely with partners to strike the right balance for the city in terms of making it a safe place, but also to address this offending behaviour. The bus station, the market has been a focus of recent partnership for activity and we are growing the team with some provisions via the mayor's office of some dedicated safer travel PCSOs coming into that work shortly as well, which can only have a positive impact. Due to the National Police uplift programme, we've had to train a number of new officers. We've had significantly new numbers of recruits coming into the city over the last twelve months. Our staffing levels are higher and better than they have been in, in certainly in my tenure at, at Leeds. But we have a lot of inexperienced officers that we're still training and bringing through. We're starting to filter officers out now to, to the vacancies that we have on our, our neighbourhood policing teams. I'm hoping as we go into the autumn and onwards that we'll start to get those teams up to full strength. And missing people, we have seen an increase in numbers of young people going missing, particularly from care placements, putting themselves at risk of exploitation or harm. Work's been ongoing with child social work services to manage placements more effectively with child when a child is in care and our objective is, is always have a greater understanding of risk and to work with our partners to get early intervention in rather than preventing or providing a crisis later on. And hopefully that gives you a flavour of some of the key challenges and some of the work that's going on in Leeds at the, at the moment from a policing point of view around that policing plan.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent. Julie, would you like to add something from a mayoral perspective?
The, the report that we've provided today, Chair, explains some of the work that we've been doing. We've tried to draw out the, the police and crime plan is obviously applies to the whole of West Yorkshire. We've tried to draw out some of the work that we've, was particularly relevant to Leeds for committed today. But the, the, the mayor's policing and crime team work very closely with the police and with with the community safety partners to support them in delivering their work and particularly in terms of setting the police and crime plan and also setting the, providing additional funding where we can to support some of those initiatives. Would you like me to go through the whole of the report or do, would you like us to?
No, thank you. I think it's a really good point now to bring in some elected members to share their experience from the different communities within the Leeds district. Councillor Cooper, did you wish to come in at this point?
Thank you, Chair. I just thought it would be, it'd work better if officers came in and, and went through their reports first of all. But as you can see from what you've heard from the Leeds commander, Steve Dodds, and from the West Yorkshire Mayor's Office. The work that is undertaken in Leeds in particular, works in really close partnership with all the community safety partners. And you're going to hear more about that in the next item, which is more focused on the partnership in Leeds itself. But I really want to take this opportunity to thank all our partners for, including the mayor's office and West Yorkshire Police for their input into that partnership and for the work that they undertake on behalf of all these Leeds residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cooper. I'll open it up to members. Councillor Anderson.
There is two, two things that come to mind is, one is, what is a crime? Because I recently asked our neighbourhood inspector if we were considering going down the Manchester route because the chief constable in Manchester has come in and is beginning to make massive impacts. Because there's a lot of things, a lot of crimes being committed and some don't appear to be getting taken forward. And the other one that is concerning me is the enforcement of twenty mile per hour zones. There is confusion that what ACPO have or have not said and what's been done locally.
If I can come back in and I'll address the first point first of all, we, we are, we are very much governed by national crime reporting standards and crime data integrity guidelines around what is a crime. If, if somebody reports a crime to West Yorkshire Police that by the definition of the, the elements of that report, then that will be recorded as a crime and, and recorded as such. There, there are a lot of things reported in the media around different areas, taking different approaches and, and such like. There have been changes nationally in, in the recording of, for example, hate crime incidents around what constitutes crime and an incidence around hate there as well. But rest assured, we take a very strong and, and consistent approach to recording what is required for crime recording and, and currently graded by the HMIC as outstanding in that particular area. In terms of enforcement of twenty miles an hour zones, our roads policing team work hard to, to enforce.
our roads policing team work hard to to enforce speed limits and to to take action where they can. We will always continue to do that. But that has again has to be balanced across all of the other resourcing constraints and and pressures and priorities that are within West Yorkshire Police as well.
Just to follow up on that one. One of the things that's very useful for elected members is is to be able to offer a clear direction in policy that is followed by neighbourhood policing teams on certain crime-related issues such as the enforcement of 20 mile per hour zones, such as the pursuit of youths in balaclavas on motorbikes. Because policy seems to be explained in different ways by different neighbourhood policing teams. And sometimes I think it would be really useful to have a clarity of purpose from West Yorkshire Police itself on those matters. Is that something which is able to be delivered from the senior policing team on the from requests from elected members?
Yeah, it's certainly something that can be be delivered. In terms of in terms of pursuit of young people on on motorcycles, that has always been a position within West Yorkshire Police that we will do that safely, appropriately and proportionately. And I think sometimes there is a maybe due to a a need for further understanding in the public around the powers and the the tools and the tactics that we have available to us as well in that it isn't just about finding that individual and catching that individual at the time that they are there. A lot of work goes on around tracking those people that are involved in in those types of activities. I think it's fair to say that there is there is a lot of chaff within this area as well because of the the rising number and use of e-scooters and and other electric bikes and probably something that that is long overdue in terms of some national intervention around legislation and also licensing and and a monitor and control of those. And our focus tends to be around those that are using those vehicles in either an antisocial or more important a criminal way. And a lot of the activity that goes on around that is also linked to the theft of motor vehicles, i.e. motorcycles from across the city. In terms of the approach to of the neighbourhood policing teams and enforcing 20 mile hour zones, I've got to balance those resources. And whilst there is activity that will go on and will be carried out by those teams, a lot of the focus of my neighbourhood policing teams at the moment is around youth violence, antisocial behaviour, drug dealing, and and that is the right and proper thing to do.
councillor Khan.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Leeds commander, Chief Superintendent, Steve Dodd. And it's good to see Chief Inspector Ledbeath as well. I've got two questions actually. One is, I do welcome, you know, the education and the connection and networking with the head teacher. That's really, really important. That's where we need to start educating our young people. And this is where, you know, the problem starts. So I do welcome. And because the ward I represent, as you know, Bermitos Richmonddale and East Leeds, is one of the challenging area. And this is where Chief Inspector have served in that area. And my question is, how is the resources allocated on those areas? Is it based off the need and is it is it across everybody gets same allocation or is it on need basis? And I know because my son recently joined the West Yorkshire Police, but it's not in Leeds authority, but it's in different authority, but he's loving it. But he says it's challenging for him as well. Same time, it's very, very challenging. I know how the MPT's officers are going through. So the other question is about the ratio of BAME officers at street level. What ratio do we have in Leeds?
So in terms in terms of the the allocation of resources, the allocation of resources starts at a strategic level from the chief officer team, from the chief constable. And there's a calculation that is carried out across the the five local authority areas for the five policing districts based on incidents, threat, harm, risk and numbers are apportioned based on that. Leeds receives around 36% of the police resources that are available for local policing because of the the volumes, the threats and the risks that sit within the city. In terms of how those are then allocated and distributed, my my first step as a commander is to allocate the right number of resources to meet the frontline demands. So that's the 999 calls that come in every single day. So those are the officers that in the main you see driving around in the marked cars with the blue lights going and what have you. That then leaves me resources after that to allocate across. The next priority is safeguarding domestic abuse teams. And we've seen significant uplifts in our numbers around that. And then the numbers that are left are then distributed around the other areas. Neighbourhood policing, as I as I mentioned in my my overview a few minutes ago, has just seen an increase of an additional 20 officers to be recruited into that area. Those officers are spread across the city in terms of need and demand as well. So the largest neighbourhood policing team in the city is the one that covers the east because that's where the biggest demand and the biggest threat harm and risk is at the moment. I'm always with my senior team looking at reviewing and moving those resources as threats emerge and develop. But at the moment, that's where the majority of those officers are are deployed and they're deployed on a basis of needs. I'm I'm happy to hear that your your son has joined us and hopefully will have a long and fruitful career. And in terms of the work that the the force are doing, we are taking significant steps to try and improve and match our representation with that of the communities that we work with and serve. And there is a long way to go and we are starting to we are starting to make strides in that direction. But it will take us a number of years to get to a point of of parity with where communities are. And but we are putting in a lot of supportive measures for candidates from ethnic minority communities to come into into policing to to give them opportunities and to give them coaching and 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 support around the application processes to try and increase that area. And and we are we are also doing that around our promotion processes as well to give officers from underrepresented groups the opportunity for mentors from within senior officers to help their development, their programme and and their work. And in terms of the this my senior team, I have at the moment, I have no minority ethnic Chief Inspector superintendents within my senior team. And from a from a chief officer team level, we have Assistant Chief Constable Mun Khan, who is our Assistant Chief Constable for Specialist Crime. And and he is he is there on the chief officer team.
Thank you. I'll bring you in in a second councillor Taylor. Chief Superintendent, you mentioned a particular officer there who was in charge of a particular area of specialist crime. And one of the things that the board has expressed in the pre-meeting is that it would be useful to understand which officers within the hierarchy were responsible for which different subject area so that they might be more easily corresponded with. However, I'm also aware that there was the issue with the police service of Northern Ireland and the distribution of personal information, which was seen as a bit of a risk. Is there is there an issue with approaching such people within your team? Or is it best to do it through a central portal if we're interested in a particular area?
I think for me, the 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 best the best contact for elected members is your local neighbourhood policing team inspector. And they can facilitate communication and what tend what tends to happen when when we give out particular senior officers and and points is all the communication goes into there and then has to be distributed back down to the correct area. So I would ask people to work through your local neighbourhood policing teams. If there is anything that you feel that that needs escalating beyond that, then by all means, come to me and my senior team at Ellen Road. And we will deal with that. But but generally, as as a policing district and as the as the district commander for Leeds, I am left to deal with the operational policing matters within my district, supported then, but obviously by my line management through the chief officer team.
councillor Taylor.
I just want to clarify, I assure councillor Khan that with Alison Law leading and the police and crime, I can't remember the police officer that in charge of racial, that the chief constable has put in charge to work alongside BAME police to know, make sure they have a fair say in the police force. And Alison is working really hard for equality, which you do know Alison, she doesn't stop at the bottom. She goes to the top. And since I took over as chair, we do have a lot of meetings in that around the race. And the chief constable and Alison and Tracy want the best for the police force when it comes to race because we are recruiting police from different minority and we want everyone to feel welcome. So I can assure councillor Khan, his work going on behind the scene. And if you do know of any, please report it to myself or Alison and Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. councillor Akta.
Thank you, Chair. It's 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 welcoming to hear your priorities which are well welcomed. However, we also understand the the police, West Yorkshire Police has gone through a very difficult times with the budget pressures and and so on and so forth. But still, our communities that we represent feel safer and and they feel that there is a police available when when they need them. And and I just wanted to put this on record that the the neighbourhood policing team that we have in in the North West are are fantastic and and also across the across the city. And only the thing that I I feel that we need to bring to your attention at this forum to take some short-term measures, for example, bonfire night is is round the corner. And there are certain areas of this city which which has a huge problem weeks before and weeks after and on the night is absolutely a dreadful for residents we 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 serve. And also, I have I have a great concern for those residents who are pets as well. So having allowed fireworks at the at the late hours of the of the night and early mornings, I think something that the police needs to take control of. We just recently had a meeting with our neighbourhood policing team and the partners. We were ensured that the resources will go into Hyde Park and Hyde Park is one of the the hotspot areas for the for the for the for the bonfire night antisocial behaviour element. So could you please ensure us that this year it will be a bit different, even though we understand the pressure the West Yorkshire Police is in. But nevertheless, those communities are willing to work with you. Let's keep them on board.
Yeah councillor, thank you for that. And and thank you for your your kind words around the North West team, which I will feed back to them. And yeah, I mean, in terms of in terms of bonfire night, bonfire certainly throughout the entire duration of my service within West Yorkshire Police has been a a significant event for us and something that we do not take lightly at all. And there's a lot of resource goes into it. There's a lot of planning. There is a force level operation that is run, that is commanded by someone of at least my rank across the whole force with additional resources to come in. Each of the local neighbourhood policing teams have their plans and work with it. I would say however, that the the approach and the work that goes on around bonfire nights and and Halloween and mischievous nights as as we have in in Yorkshire as well, is is very much a partnership approach. And we have seen some significant issues across across Leeds in in recent years. You mentioned Hyde Park. That was the only significant thing we had last year, to be fair, across the city in terms of anything that needed intervention by specialist public order officers from from the police to deal with that. We have seen things in Hair Hills in recent years where there was significant antisocial behaviour linked to fireworks and such like. But there were a number of arrests made in in relation to that. And we work really, really closely with with the council as we go into this period, the lasbats are absolutely central to that. All of the work that we do with the the council officers around getting getting ready. I I would say that last year's bonfire operation and results is probably the best we've had in years. Not perfect, not where we all want it to go. We want people to enjoy themselves and do what they they need to do to mark that that event. But we also need them to do it so that it doesn't impact on other members of the community. And certainly as a as an owner of two dogs who absolutely detest bonfire night, it's something that we need to to look at and control. But that but it's a wider issue around the the sale of fireworks and the the licensing and and the availability of of those that also needs to be at the centre of what we what we do. But that's why the partnership is so important. But but absolutely, you have my my promise that our operational planning is already well advanced, our resources are already there and and identified. And there will be a full operation ongoing in Leeds, in the lead up and over bonfire night itself and the days following to make sure that we don't get anything significant across the city. But then I can't legislate for individuals and groups.
councillor Hannan.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, Chief Inspector, for your comprehensive report. I welcome that. I just want to bring two issues to the committee. The first one is your reporting looks like exclusively for hard crime, which is also a big problem. But I want to bring your attention to the soft crime that affects my ward and especially other wards across the city, which is tagging and graffiti. Can you tell me, do you have a strategy or a policy in place to deal with bringing people to courts in terms of convictions? And the reason why I say this is, Headingly High Park and especially Little London and Woodhouse has been affected tremendously recently with tagging and graffiti. People have come to me and saying, councillor, look, it's affecting my mental health now. How can we deal with this? I feel that it's a soft crime, but can you give us a commitment today that you will prioritise looking at tagging and and graffiti that's affecting neighbours? Not only in Headingly High Park, I've got colleagues across the table now, which will echo what I'm saying is it's starting to affect other wards across the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your question. I I think we need to get into balance what where the priorities and the resourcing of policing needs to go. And all of my deployments and all of my focus is based on vulnerable victims, vulnerable people and where the most threat, harm and risk is, which is why I will always deploy officers and teams to issues such as knife crime, domestic abuse, serious sexual offending. And before we would look at prioritising graffiti and other forms of criminal damage. Our overall reporting of criminal damage is down by nearly 700 offences year to date within the city. The neighbourhood policing teams do look at at graffiti and criminal damage issues as part of the the ASB work that they do. And but they are they are traditionally extremely difficult and resource-intensive offences to to find the those responsible and to bring those people to justice. And usually because of the level of crimes involved, the the public interest and the public return for that investment is is out of balance and out of kilter. And so we do look at it. It it's very difficult to attribute tags to an individual. And because despite even, we 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 might get intelligence to say that a certain individual is using a certain tag. But again, that's no, that isn't good enough for a court of law in terms of beyond all reasonable doubt to be able to do that. So yes, we look at it. In terms of is it going to be one of my biggest priorities, then then unfortunately I can't say it is because when people are losing their lives in the city, when people are being abused. when people are losing their lives in the city, when people are being abused and 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 put in fear and and controlled and coerced by partners and people, that's where my priority has got to be. councillor Rontry.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for your report, Chief Superintendent. I appreciate it's a very wide ranging report on your activities. Thank you also to the mayor's office for their written report. My question's on a very similar theme to councillor Hanan here. I actually live in Kirkstall and represent Kirkstall, which is the ward next to his and it's graffiti is an increasing problem for ourselves as well. I mean, we used to hear in the media a few years ago, it's often have the expression urban blight. And it it does have a sort of pervasive, like gives a pervasive downer on the place. The people feel like they're sort of living in one of the nasty bits of nineteen seventies New York sometimes, I think. And it's just like nobody cares about the area, people are allowed to do whatever they want. And I think the effect of it is very pervasive. No, I totally understand. You've spoken today about murders and knife crime and substantial drug busts. And I could perfectly easily get at an operational level if you're going to have to make choices. Then graffiti isn't going to be top there. But in terms of a sort of a plan over a period of time, I think I would hope and I'm sure that that citizens in our part of the world would hope that there would sort of come a point of the year where it would be possible to make a focus on this kind of thing that goes beyond just reporting it. I mean, I know you've mentioned intelligence and these, the line that so often comes to the police, which is virtually violent is we can't do anything if we've nothing to go on. Get that totally. But can you help us? Or any suggestions that what we can do to as a as a community to produce some actionable information? If you're taking a line that because of your quite reasonably and rightly prioritising violent crime, what can we do to help ourselves? Any any advice in that area?
Yeah, of course. And thank you for your question. And I I think I think we need to get this into balance as well in terms of yes. Yes, I will prioritize those more harmful crimes and and I've got to in terms of putting resourcing into that. But but that doesn't mean that we ignore all other crime types in in the in the city. We we track our crime levels. I mentioned in my update, the spin meetings that superintendent Dan Wood leads on on my behalf for the district that looks at where we are getting calls and where we are looking at those demand generators, we call them, within policing around our resourcing being dragged into to recording and and dealing with those offences. That meeting is very much used then to come out with a bespoke approach through the neighbourhood policing teams to deal with that. So if, for example, we were seeing a large number of reports around graffiti in an area, that would would most likely highlight itself at that spin meeting and result in a in an action coming to the neighbourhood policing team inspector to look at that as as an issue. We also do a lot of work through our early help hubs. So if we identify individuals that are responsible, whilst we may not be able to take a full level prosecution, or it might not be the right and appropriate and proportionate thing to do because of the age or vulnerabilities or whatever the people involved, there are other things we can do around alternatives. We use a system called Outcome Twenty Two, which allows us to do to to come to an outcome of a crime that allows us to do some intervention work with those involved to try and deter them and to rehabilitate them and move them away from from crime without putting them into the criminal justice system and 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 dealing with them that way. We also do a lot of work with Lasbat as well and do a lot of referrals into them and and the the local authority can sometimes have more of an impact around that level of offending because of the types of intervention they can do. So the partnership work in that area is very, very important. So I don't want to mislead you in terms of saying that we we would never do anything against that. But again, if if to put a team full time into dealing with an issue like that is very, very difficult for me to do, but the mechanisms are there to highlight it as an issue and to deal with it as it develops. So I would ask people to keep reporting things to us.
Thank you. What would you suggest is the best channel for reporting? The incidents of this type. I mean, there's I know there's a range of options out there. There's the one O one service, there's web chat. A lot of a lot of people I've spoken to are quite disillusioned with one O one. And I know from my own experience, the web chat, web chat is very effective and I've certainly something something I reported locally. Instant as a instant interactive web chat and call back on the phone within about half an hour afterwards. Police officers are anxious to see if they could help and that was would you be able to give any advice on what you think are the best routes for reporting particularly graffiti, graffiti tagging and incidents of that type?
Before you answer, Chief Superintendent, councillor McCluskey, you had something similar, didn't you?
I did. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief Superintendent. The biggest issue I have from our residents is being able to report. Clearly, and I've experienced that myself, trying to report the multiple car racing we have on Whitehall Road, Keldare, adjacent to Elland Road. People can't get through on one O one. I only found out last week from the pack meeting. And one of your colleagues advised us on the web chat, the live web chat. It doesn't seem to be out there that this is available to the public. Can we have that that better promoted?
And yeah, two really, really good points. In terms of promotion, it is it is on the front page of our our website. We do try and push it as much as we can, but I'll take I'll take your your comments and board around trying to just push that further. The web chat way is a really, really good way of getting that information in. There's also an online reporting sort of portal that you can use within the within the website as well to do that. And you will get a call back. One O one, I think I think one O one does get a bad press at times and people I think it's the the age old thing, isn't it? If you have a bad experience, you tend to tell ten people. If you have a good experience, you don't tell tend to tell many people. But generally, our our answer rate on one O one is improving all the time and is and is even at peak deck times is down to a few minutes. We will always prioritize nine 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 calls over answering one O one. And I think everyone would agree with that. And I would just ask people to to persevere with that. I've I've rang them one O one off duty and a number of times and got got through. I've never personally had a problem with it, but I'm but I'm aware that there are times when waiting times are there and what have you. But there are a number of routes in, I would certainly say either through through the website, through the web chat or or through one O one is the best way to report those incidents. And I wouldn't I wouldn't encourage people to go direct to individual officers. I know I know as elected members, you will have contacts with people. By all means, once it's recorded, by all means, give that that officer a a an email or a text or a ring or whatever and say I've recorded, I've reported this and this is the reference number. But I'd rather get things reported at at source so we know we're capturing everything.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent. On the issue of reporting, one of the things that's frustrating for elected members is that we're encouraged to tell people who complain to us about crime issues in our area, that they do report it. So their experience at one O one is crucial because if they have a bad experience once, they don't just tell ten people. They just don't report it again as well. And one of the issues we've had recently is that people have phoned up and have reported a crime and being told it is not a crime. And then when we've gone back to our neighbourhood policing teams, they've clarified that, yes, a crime was committed. So is there an issue around training of people who are answering the call? Would that come under your jurisdiction or would that come under the mayoral jurisdiction in terms of supporting customer service portals?
That firmly comes under West Yorkshire Police. It's an operational policing matter. And our our contact staff are among some of our lower graded members of of police staff within the organisation and we 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 have a challenging time in recruiting and we've we've certainly seen over the last couple of years, significant gaps where we've had to put police officers into those roles to to keep our contact function going over, certainly over last summer and the summer before. But we are seeing a significant investment in those roles now in a number of contact staff that are being recruited. The chief officer team took a decision last year to over recruit into that area. So normally what we do, as as a lot of organisations, will recruit to our hundred percent staffing and then as as people leave will recruit back again. We now over recruit into contact to try and keep those numbers going. But they are, there are a lot of new people that are coming into those roles that need support, mentoring and training. So that is ongoing. And there's a lot of a lot of support and work that goes there. And and we're trying to get people to be as 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 good as they can in those areas. All I'd ask is is keep reporting. If there are specific issues that you see where you are getting getting that disparity between what is a crime, what isn't a crime, then then please report them back in through your your neighbourhood policing team so we can act on that and get that feedback back because it's absolutely my aim and my my colleagues' aim within that contact function to give the best possible service that we can to the public.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent. Just a question for Julie Reid. We've had a a lot of discussion around low level crime like graffiti and how it can be tackled. And obviously, that's something that we do in a in a community safety partnership manner. Maybe we could continue that discussion for the next item. But in the first instance, I do appreciate that there is a I'm sorry, I forgot what it's called now. The Proceeds of Crime Fund, which has a certain parameters in terms of how it can be spent. Would it not be appropriate for such a fund to enable community based graffiti cleanup operations or could that be something that you could look into in terms of a response?
The 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 Mayor's Safer Communities Fund, I think, is is what you're referring to, is funded by proceeds from the the Proceeds of Crime Act. And the mayor in the and what's outlined in our paper is that the mayor has a community grants scheme, which she runs with with those funds. The the focus of the Safer Communities Fund is to support delivery of the priorities in the Police and Crime Plan. And that's what the grant rounds are directed towards. The mayor has control over what the grant rounds address. And certainly, I can feed this back into our future planning for members. But the when when I come to my report, I will explain the the engagement that we did in terms of drawing up the Police and Crime Plan and assessing those priorities for inclusion in the plan. But certainly, I can take those members' concerns back to the mayor.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. I I thought you'd covered your report earlier. Now, would would you like to add something more now then?
Chair, I I haven't gone through our report yet. If you'd like me to do that, then I can do or or you can come continue questioning the police.
Sorry, we we were under the impression that you'd introduced it. We have we have already absorbed it, obviously, as an agenda item and we've taken on the the issues that are in there. But so you're not obliged to 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 give a a presentation of it. In fact, we're going to draw this item to a close with a couple of final comments from members. I have councillor Akta, councillor As Khan and councillor Anderson. Oh, I have another one. Councillor Tudor.
Chair, Chair, I'll I'll keep it very brief. With regards to your last comments to the mayor's office with the safer funds, obviously, our our ward did did get some funding which which is welcoming. But perhaps the question would have been we know that there are organisations and the residents groups who can apply for the funding. Can we, as a local authority and the area committees, can we put the bids in? So we can, we know where the problem is, for example, in what councillor Hanan just said about the tagging and and graffiti problem. We also have subgroups, environment, safety groups. And I think those groups should be entitled for those funding, where we can apply for those funds. And then that fund could be utilized for things that we want to use for. I hope that makes sense.
I think that's a useful suggestion to take away. Councillor Khan?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just briefly, to Leeds Commander. You said, you know, we need to build a relationship with our MPT locality officers. And what we find in in East is that we've got transient officers within the Salford sergeants to the inspectors for the from the chief inspectors. Once we get to know those officers and then they move on. And then we start from back, you know, from scratch again. So I mean, at the moment, we've got inspector Alsa Nicholas was brilliant, actually. Who was a sergeant in the area, he's been promoted to the inspector, he knows the issues for East Leeds. I know we can't hold people to stay for there longer because they need to be promoted, they need to move on as well. But is there any time scale they can stay in the post within the area, especially in the M P T teams?
Yeah, it is, it is, it is an issue that and you're right to raise it. And and unfortunately, the way in which police progression and police promotion works is is that we do see people getting promoted and moved around in terms of the roles that they undertake. What I'm trying to do is to is to maintain that stability as much as I I can in that area. And I'm trying to put officers, particularly inspector and sergeant level into those roles that I know will be there for hopefully a couple of years or more to get that things. I'm I'm really grateful for your comments around Ali Nichols. He is an excellent inspector, as are all of my neighbourhood policing team inspectors. They're there for for a reason. They're picked to go into those roles because of their particular skills. And I hope that as people move through, for example, Mark Lund, who is the the new MPT inspector for the south of the city, was a former sergeant in that team as well. So that's the type of thing I'm trying to do so that if I can move people through to keep them there and keep their skills there because there's a knowledge base as well, the the knowledge that that those teams are building up around the key individuals in the area, the key offenders, the key problems, what the engagement looks like. So absolutely, it's something I'm trying to do. It's not without its challenges. But but I I am trying to do what I can to keep people in there. What I don't want is people going in for a few months and then moving on to the next role because it doesn't do me any benefit, but it certainly doesn't do the the communities and yourselves as elected members any benefit. councillor Anderson.
A number of points on some of the things that you've said. For years, I've been concerned at the level of communication that is between the police and us locally in our particular area. I've met with Paul Money, who introduced me to the then neighbourhood chief inspector to try and improve it. No, not improved at all. I I have argued and argued and finally I get communication on a weekly basis of crimes that have been committed, but crimes in inverted commas. For example, this week, there were three reported to me. There were three crimes in the whole of Adlington Wharfdale created, of which two of them cannot be disclosed because the police don't have the full details to give to me. So fine, I then tell the residents I've got three crimes. They come back and say, right, fine. So what are we doing with the rest of the time? So I then try and find out what the police were doing. I get an example of that. A few weeks ago, there was helicopters, drones and everything out over the Hope Park area. I asked at a meeting recently of the inspector why I and my colleagues had not been briefed about it. And he said, well, I wasn't on duty. It would be down to the inspector or the sergeant that was in duty at the time, as to whether or not they felt you should or shouldn't have been briefed. Well, if it's important enough to put all of that in the sky, there must have been something going on of some description. So we've got a problem there. We then have problems with blocking crimes because there is an officer, well, it's not actually an officer. It's a member of the public who I've been told to put all of my issues through. And this this person makes a medical receptionist look like an amateur in terms of not allowing crimes through, to be quite frank, because, you know, I get reports back, oh, yes. We've been out to look at that speeding. I was out. Well, this officer's got no more powers, this person's got no more powers than I've got, even less than the PCSOs I've got. So there's an issue there. Then we come to So there's an issue there. Then we come to the resource allocation. Now rightly or wrongly, in the outer North West, we were told the other day, we're now down to one PC for the whole of outer North West and we're getting recruitment coming through. But on Sunday, we had two police officers, one being a PCSO, were visiting. One was the Otley Vintage Traffic Exeter in Savaganza, another one was Pool Feast. When we're short of policing, that shouldn't be a priority to go out and go around and having fun and games. They should be out there. So fine, I accept there's a shortage of things. So it's how we go about getting that. Because I keep being told we need evidence. So I try and provide the evidence. But the police come back to me and say, no councillor, we don't want you to report it, we want the residents to report it. Well, the residents have given up trying to report it because nothing ever happens, to be quite frank. So there's a breakdown in communication. Might not be true in every single area of the city. I don't think it is by listening to, you know, councillor Cooper often points out the positives that the police are doing. And I'm not disputing that it takes place. But why is it in some parts of the city? Now, we are talking about the same neighbourhood and police inspector that you've got the greatest time for. He's just newly arrived. I've asked him at a meeting of the community committee recently. Now that you've been in, what changes are you going to introduce as a result of you now finally being in? None. Well, things went well right beforehand. Ah, right. The inspector, you know, he, he's got to cover and the, the inner area is probably, but it's how do we improve communication? Because it isn't very good at all. And I've even got Paul Money to try and help out and it's just not helped in the slightest.
It might be worth covering that in the next item unless the, the chief superintendent wishes to make a specific comment on that. I'm going to bring in councillor Vine, sorry Tudor, councillor Tudor, the final councillor comment. And then you can respond if you wish to chief superintendent in your summing up, if that's all right.
Thank you. Not very dramatic in terms, in, in terms compared to helicopters and, and that sort of comments. But I do quite a lot of work in graffiti, sort of a special interest in mine. And just on the point about the, the proceeds of crime and, and getting the teams together and things. One of the biggest problems we've had council wise is that most graffiti ends up not being on council property. It's on third party assets, Virgin Media, BT, West Yorkshire Metro, private property. It's tremendously difficult to get these third parties to clean their own assets. And so it's, it's a great idea, but any project will run into those issues of ownership and you're effectively touching somebody else's property. Irritating as that is, to finish on a, on a really good, a, a different experience from councillor Anderson. I think in our ward, we feel pretty, we feel pretty well updated in terms, in terms of being elected members, in terms of getting timely updates on serious incident in our ward. So that's a, that's a good experience we've had. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tudor. Over to you, Chief Superintendent Summop.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the opportunities for coming today and, and speaking to you all. I, I'll go, I'll go back to, to what I've said throughout, the, the success of, the success of policing and the success of the work that we do across, across the city and, and the, the area is, is down to partnership working. And I would, I would just ask every elected member to work with us, to be advocates of policing, to, to, to be advocates to their, their, their communities and, and to try and promote that, that interaction, that engagement with communities so we can get those reports coming in. Because it is absolutely vital and important. I, I would really, really would urge everyone to make good relationships and, and work with, with the neighbourhood policing teams. And I know we've seen a, a mixture of, of good and not so good in terms of the reports coming back here today. And but, but continue to speak with your neighbourhood policing team inspectors and, and to manage expectations. They are extremely busy people and they do have focus and priorities that they need to look at. But they will try and answer your, your questions as best as they can. In terms of individual incidents that are ongoing, sometimes we don't tell you about them because they're either force level operations in the, in the sense of drones and helicopters and things like that going on at the time, which, which unfortunately falls, sometimes falls into the need to know basis around what's going on. Other times, they're just things like we might have a high risk missing person that's out and about and we're looking for them and it, and it's, it's looking to resolve that. So again, it's, it's what's pertinent in terms of impacting on the community at that time is what I would hope my neighbourhood policing teams will be passing on to you. But we are absolutely committed to keeping that engagement going. We are committed to community safety. We are committed to our role. Our resourcing is getting better. And hopefully, as we move through the rest of this year into next year, we'll start to see some real investment into, back into neighbourhood areas and the results that that will hopefully bring. But thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent. I appreciate you've got a lot on from your report. There's some very serious agendas that you're addressing. We won't oblige you to sit through the next item if it's not scheduled for you. So anybody who's here for this item, if you do wish to retire and carry on with your full time role, please do. But you're more than welcome to sit in to discuss the Leeds Safer Stronger Communities update. Thank you. On that matter, we will now hand over to councillor Cooper to introduce the next item.
Thank you, councillor Goldon. And, 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 and many of the issues that were raised with Chief Superintendent Dodds there. I would imagine there is some overlap with some of the work that the Safer Leeds Executive and, and the partnership is undertaking. So please feel free to, you know, raise those again. And perhaps one in particular around the graffiti that we may be able to answer some more in the, with the officers that are around the table. I, I would just say on graffiti that there's kind of a bit of a split around responsibility because it's environment as well, not just through community safety. So, but perhaps that's something that scrutiny board might want to take up further in terms of getting a joint update on what the authority and its partners are doing around that. But I would however really recognise what councillor Tudor said about either third party or private property when it comes to graffiti. And I know that many, many attempts have been made, thinking of in Headingley in particular, around trying to identify the, the person responsible for that property and then to get it cleaned up. Even if we're not asking for them to pay for it, you know, it's through a, a community cleanup or something. So it can be a little tricky to navigate, but, but I'm, but I'm sure we can inform you of the work that's, that we're undertaking in terms of antisocial behaviour and graffiti around that. But the, the report in, in front of you, I'm delighted to introduce the report to scrutiny, I have to say. And the amount of detail and work that is, that's, that's written in the report, that's, that's happened through the partnership. I think each time, you know, when I read it and when I get these updates, it's, it's remarkable the amount of work that goes on in this city in terms of partnership work. I don't see that reflected in other areas of the country when I go around and speak to my counterparts in, in particular. That they have such a good working partnership in terms of community safety and other aspects as well. So I hope that scrutiny members have had the opportunity to read the report and can ask the questions that they may have for, for us to respond to. But in terms of introducing it, Chair, I'll leave it there for, for other comments and officers may want to pick it up. Simon, are you taking from now? If that's helpful, Chair.
Yes, thanks councillor Cooper. And when the chief officers are responding, I think it would be useful for us to understand because there weren't any particular outcome based goals in the original plan. What it is that you personally are most proud of that you've achieved so far in the trajectory of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Before Julie departs, I'd just like to say on behalf of West Yorkshire Combined Authority and the Police and Crime Plan, the, the report in your pack also details that contribution that the West Yorkshire Combined Authority have to the Safer Leeds CSP partnership. So thank you for your report. And there's some dovetail work there across both the partnership and the combined authority. In Leeds, we are very grateful for the continued support from the combined authority, particularly around the community safety funds, the additional funding that we've been able to get at a regional base through a variety of funds, including the Safer Streets Fund, that has enabled us to add value to our statutory requirements. So I'd like to say thank you first and foremost for that. And in agreement with councillor Cooper, we're very much pushing forward now on our Safer Stronger Communities Plan. Members will be aware that the youth service has actually now come under the Safer Stronger Communities Team as of April twenty three. And the localities team actually moved over in terms of April twenty two. And that brings additionality and focus in terms of delivery at a neighbourhood level, which is really important. And moving back to our report in front of you today, I've got a number of officers with me today. I'll ask them if that's okay, Chair, just to do a very brief bullet points in terms of what's in the report and ask them to identify their key success that they're proud of in terms of the outcome in the last year. Is that okay? Thank you. Okay. So we'll start with, we've got a number of priorities. We've got nine priorities, as you can see in the report. It very much dovetails and aligns to the West Yorkshire Police and Crime Plan. Below that we have, or cross cutting, should I say, is equality, diversity and inclusion, very much important. It's not just about the crime types, it's around how we work with people, for people and in place in, in communities. And that's really important. So our first priority is antisocial behaviour and we've touched on that. I've asked Kevin just to give a nudge to some of the work that's doing based on the members' conversations around PSPOs, bonfire nights and some of the work around graffiti that's going on. So if you could be relatively brief, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, Simon. I will try and be brief. I am noted for talking an awful lot, so I will keep it brief. As you say, Simon saying you've got the report in front of you, so you can see the three shared priorities. Sorry, the three key rules that, that I'd like to touch on if we can today, highlighted in obviously three different categories. First one is in, in relation to prevention and intervention. I think one of the most exciting things for us now is having youth services within this service area because I think there's a lot of a potential for antisocial behaviour teams, localities teams, housing teams to join together to try and look at a joint response. One of the things we are proud of is now our ASB Board, which is council led, is now driving a piece of work in relation to a youth strategy for Leeds antisocial behaviour team and partners. So what we're trying to do is try and build, join up those, those gaps maybe that are there. So we know we've got a youth violence process, we know we've got serious organised crime, we know we've got interventions. We know we've got a lot of money coming in from youth services. Now it's drawing that together and see what it looks like as a picture and make sure any gaps there are fulfilled. So we're on with that now, which is Heather Ashby's leading on that for me. And that's a really good, exciting piece of work. In relation to other things that we're doing around interventions, we do an awful lot in relation to problem solving as well and trying to identify issues before they come, if they're coming issue. I'm proud to inform you that we've now got a mediation team with inside the ASB Lhasbatt team. I oversee that team. We've trained them now in, in a detailed mediation process. They've been operational now since the beginning of July. I haven't got exactly all the figures for them, but what they do is they speak to customers who are first time reporters to us. Whether it be ASB or noise, they try and see if they'll seek mediation between them and their, their neighbours sometimes. And I'm really pleased to, to say that there's thirty percent uptake on that. So on average, we get around about fifteen to twenty calls a day about noise nuisance. We're dealing with about eight or nine of those in relation to mediation. And the reason why I'm so proud of that is that stops the escalation. That means we are saving money. We're saving officers' time having to deal with investigations when we want to try and bring communities back together again. So that's the intervention side of things. There is an awful lot of other work you can see inside the, the, the document we supplied to, which I won't go into too much detail. Target responses, it's really interesting to, to listen to superintendent Dodds, who I've known for some time now in relation to the work that they're going. Just give you some reassurance. I set on the gold and silver command structure for the bonfire. I've actually developed the bonfire planning for last year and this year. I'm in consultation with the Yorkshire Police Court regularly. Inspector Armstead is my link within the police who's drawing the plans together locally. But, but district wide, sorry, West Yorkshire wide, there is a very, very detailed plan. Ours has been seen as best practice within, within that, that arena because we have got a plan around about localities teams using the funding wisely and making sure we get the, to the right people the right times. We've got our housing officers that are really keen to get involved going out and identifying where rubble's coming up. And we've also got our other teams like Clean Enables team, cleaning up places for us. So it is a good piece of work and it isn't, it isn't a closed document. So I can share that with, with elected members when I've finished it, which is what I intend to do through the Community Safety Champions, if that's all right. Moving on to our problem solving. So we talked around about, so I'll go, sorry, go backwards on target responses because we, we've told you around about the work with the universities where we are funded by the universities to do some interactive patrols. And I think this is key where we'd start now talking about the tagging issue. I was so surprised when I first had a walk around Hyde Park to see how much there was up there. There is an hour drive within the plan from Leeds Watch that if we see any offensive graffiti, which is either racist or on a protected characteristics, we get it removed instantly. We do try and speak to the residents and tenants who own those properties and work with Mark Island in private sector to make sure we speak to the right people at the right time. It is a massive job to look at because every street's got it on. But because of the dedicated service, what we are doing is because of those patrols around Headingley Hyde Park and some parts of Kirkstow, we're picking up very quickly when it comes up. So super dense already talked about how difficult it is to get people convicted or even any sanctions against because we don't know they are. We just need to get people to trust us to tell us because most of these people live in that community. They're not coming in and going out again, they live in there. So building up those, those, that confidence is key for us, which is the dedicated service is doing it. And I do know the North West MPT and our Lhasbatt team have got really strong links in that area. And other councillors are really invested as well because all I do is get the other side of it from my manager saying mine are the best councillors in the district. So that's what, how he feels. PSPO, we've just renewed it and reviewed it. We, we've made sure that this is now fit for purpose moving forward. It's within the Headingley Otley Run area. It deals with things, violence against women and girls because we've put sanctions inside their prohibitions about verbal abuse and sexual comments made to, to, to women and girls. We've built in there around about a small dispersal to make sure that we can get people out of the area that shouldn't be there. We're working with the publicans, we're working with all our partners around licensing, Clean Enables team. And that's been really effective. And again, seen nationally as a good piece of work in relation to the PSPO. The Otley Run is quite important to us because that is one of those things that's carried on going. And I think we're finally getting some headway on it and we're finally getting some good results on side of there. Problem solving, talking about something we're really proud of. It's always been my passion is problem solving. I'm a fully trained and paid up member of problem solving. I love it to bits. I'm now driving some business inside Lhasbatt that we actually do train our officers up in proper problem solving using the SARAH model, linking our partners in the police and making sure we're all on the same page. I think the first time we used this was on Hallam Moor, which is one of our neighbourhood improvement partnerships. We've now generated some others called problem solving groups with our localities teams. Doesn't matter what we call them, it's the same process. It's around about making sure we're in the right place at the right time with the right solutions. One of the things, I'll just give you one before I stop, if I can, one thing that happened is the, the district wide PSPO for motor vehicles. When I wrote that, it was intention of looking at how we can intervene early doors, but also deal with people who were doing things wrong on the street. And so we built a, a lot of complex things inside there that I'm now sat with Sergeant Claire Williams, who was the off road motorcycle lead. Andy Johnson, who's the ops lead for road traffic and Adele Fox, who's the Lhasbatt partnership lead. I've drawn in now North Yorkshire County Council into my meetings. I've got peaceful West Midlands coming to our meetings, people from Nottingham come to our meetings. Because what I want to do is I want to generate a district wide misuse of motor vehicle policy and a strategy that goes on, on the back of it. Inside there, it is going to be talking around about all the types of vehicles. So when I, when I built it, I wrote it with something called a mechanically propelled vehicle. That covers your e-bikes, your e-scooters, it covers your off road motorcycles, it covers your quads. But I have to say, one of the biggest problems we've got at the moment is our cruise events, our car events, which I know all of you are suffering up at Driglington, certainly on the east at Skelton's, certainly on King Lane. We've got a lot of problems in relation to people misusing their vehicles. So that strategy is going to strengthen that. But we're also going to learn from it. A little bit of credit to the police. Sergeant over at East, Sophie Collette has put a really good problem solving plan together. I brought her into my working group and we're going to use that as a bit of a template of how we can do business moving forward. So that's some of the things that we are doing. It's all really very positive. I'm going to East Midlands next week. They want to see our order. They understand how we approached it and they all want to see how we're going to move forward. They want to see our order, they understand how we approached it and they all want to see how we're going to move forward with it because it is quite innovative and it is one of the first in the country that details this, there's such much detail. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah. And if there are any questions for Kevin, we'll come back to it at the end kind of thing. We'll just go through if that's okay, Chair. I'm just conscious of time as well. What time have we got for this allocated slot? Do we know?
We go on as long as there's interest.
Right. Well, there'll be lots of interest. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to the next priority, which is domestic violence and abuse. And that's going to be fed back from Jude. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Just really to start off with, obviously our arrangements are overseen by a domestic abuse local partnership board. And we've just launched our sort of strategy. There's a draft version of the domestic abuse strategy, which we've been working towards. Really proud that that's a very much co-produced piece of work. So it's across the partnership and all statutory agencies and third sector. But what's really key to that is the voice of victims and survivors and children and families within that strategy. And I think it's the first time we're going to be moving towards a potential forward that's going to be co-written by victims, survivors and councillor Cooper, which I think really identifies where we're putting victims, survivors at the centre of that strategy. But you'll see from your paper, there are the four, there are four chapters within that. They've all been written by our partners who obviously got that knowledge base around those areas. And it underpins all that learning we've got from our domestic homicide review. So we've got about twelve years of learning in Leeds. I'm going to work around a support and safe accommodation strategy. We've already done one version, there's a refresh required this year and then a further strategy next year, which we're working on as well. Just in terms of those really practical things in terms of how we ensure the safety for victims and survivors within their own household. That support and safe accommodation strategy came with some money from government. And we were able to put in place things like a sanctuary team, which is working in order to safeguard people who were in their own homes. And that's seen some real successes in terms of how we target hardening those properties. And one of the things we're very keen to look at is how do we align our housing strategy for the city alongside our domestic abuse strategy as well. So there's certainly some workforce development opportunities around the housing sector to look at how they identify domestic abuse within households. One of the areas of the domestic abuse app looks at how children has been as victims. So there's been some real activity about how we ensure that we've got a response to that and some real practical application, including working with our third sector organisations such as Pine Closed Doors, who have got some workers who are out in communities, working alongside families, identifying responses for children experiencing domestic abuse. And then we've replicated that approach within our refuges across the city as well. And we also have a young persons IDVA, that's like independent domestic abuse advocate, working in our front door safeguarding arrangements. And the funding for that has been extended until two thousand and twenty five, which is really, really good piece of work, working with young people experiencing domestic abuse with a real focus on, I guess, a difference for young people's experience and seeing what that looks like on social media platforms, et cetera. Operation and Compass, for colleagues who are aware of that, is a notification process to schools where a child has experienced domestic abuse. Our witness though was present at the time. And we're moving towards an IT platform that schools use called CPOMs, which will ensure a direct notification to that school. At the moment, we only do notifications during term time. This change will mean that we'll be doing three hundred and sixty-five days a year and obviously increase efficiency in terms of identifying those children as well. And just some ongoing gaps in terms of how we work with perpetrators of domestic abuse. And there was a bid that was put, a joint bid put in through the mayor's office. Sadly, that was unsuccessful. But we are hoping on feedback from home officers as to why and certainly looking at from a locality perspective, how do we try and ensure there are responses for perpetrators of domestic abuse. We have a very robust arrangement through our policing team with through IOM, Integrated Fender Management, that manage that cohort as a partnership approach. And we've got we've got a very robust workforce development arrangement as well. So we have a modular approach to training domestic abuse in the city for all the partnership. Very much linking into what G S M Dodds said around the training that the police have received as well recently. And that's accessible for anybody online. We were very happy to receive the Domestic Abuse Commissioner. So Nicole Jacobs came to see Leeds and we held a partnership panel with her. And there's some areas of work that we, as nationally, we're going to be taking forward through that conversation. And as I've already intimated, we have a really good representation around victim survivor voice. And we've actually got a dedicated worker now, working within our domestic abuse services that is helping us sort of influence service delivery moving forward.
And your most proud moments, what you're pleased about in the last year, Jude?
I think it's very much that victim survivor sort of work we've done. Historically, I think victim survivors were very much put at the bottom of any practice or policy and strategies. They are very much at the forefront and actually having victims survivors sitting on the board is a very powerful experience that makes us really understand what they're experiencing.
Brilliant. Thank you, Jude, and thank you for bringing that up. And we'll move on to the next shared priority, which is hate crime. And Jeff is going to be doing that update. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Hate crime strategic board is chaired by councillor Marsh Catong on behalf of councillor Cooper and is responsible for the management of the Leeds hate crime strategy, which is due to be reviewed next year. So we're well into its current iteration. Three key deliverables are outlined in the report around increasing reporting, around preventing hate crime and around support for victims. A lot of work has gone into the hate crime response agenda over the last twelve months. And we have a dedicated resource in the Equality and Hate Crime function, working on that now. And I mean, I'm proud of all of the work that's happened in the last twelve months, but I'll pick out a few key areas. Hate incident reporting in schools has been reviewed and refreshed. We have a new system in place now. And we're working with our partners Stop Hate UK to deliver that. And we are getting robust data starting to come through. That was only initially implemented very late last year. We have been undertaking a review of third-party reporting centres and also signposting centres. And we already have a number of key organisations in the city, Union Citizens of ICE, who are signed up to delivering that. Moving forward, we have a responsibility as a local authority to provide that third-party reporting capacity around hate incidents. And that reflects the fact that there are some historical challenges for some communities in terms of engaging with the criminal justice system. And we will be continuing to roll that out. The priority at the moment is identifying some key organisations and some key locations where there is high demand. And in addition, we want to focus on the different protected characteristics to ensure that those communities have trusted organisations that they can go to if necessary. That brings me into the focus we've had on disability over the last few years. There's been some absolutely amazing work done by partners both inside the council and outside the council and a clear approach to that work. The example that really stands out is the example that's taken place in Seacroft where that has really, really assisted in encouraging increased reporting because it's a safe venue where people feel that they're able to go and they are able to engage. And I think that's made a real difference. And so that model is something that we want to build on with other communities where we might have some challenges. We've done a lot of work on anti-Muslim prejudice, as members will know. And most recently, we've launched the Community Reference Group. So the Anti-Muslim Prejudice Working Group is professionals working across partner organisations, including Leeds City Council. The Community Reference Group, which has come into being, is raising the voice of communities to provide that challenge against progress. And we've had the first meeting of that has already taken place, the next meeting's programmed in. And we had some really, really useful and robust conversations and the challenge that comes with that. But it was very positive. And I think that relationship around that issue is getting stronger. And finally, I just wanted to touch on the campaigns that we have coming up. Later in the year, we've done a lot of work on strengthening our awareness raising around hate crime. And just want to make you aware of a couple of things that we will be doing before the municipal year end. So we have Hate Crime Awareness Week coming up in October. We've just started circulating a really comprehensive programme around that. We have around a dozen to fifteen events that will be taking place with partners across the different protected characteristics and involving a lot of stakeholders. And members will be welcome to attend many of those events. We have a conference on antisemitism and anti-Muslim prejudice, which we'll be delivering at the start of December. Because we have previously done work on antisemitism back in two thousand and seventeen, we've done our recent work on anti-Muslim prejudice. There's a lot of crossover and a lot of support amongst both communities to work collaboratively on that. So we will be issuing invitations to that shortly. And then finally, we have some plans for a hate crime awareness raising campaign, which will be not just in the city centre, but targeting other areas of the city as well. So digital display boards and traditional display boards, advertising hoardings around the city, but also social media. And also we're looking at some other innovative and creative potential options, including perhaps having a mural in the city, which highlights the issue of hate crime. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you, Jeff. Much appreciated. I'm going to pass over to now Magdalena, who's going to do the drugs and alcohol update. Thank you.
Hello. So I'm going to focus on what's new. And what's new this year is that we have a new drug and alcohol partnership board and a really good, strong partnership. There's a new national strategy from harm to hope. And as part of that, we've had new money in Leeds. So people can see some quite impressive numbers in the report. We had four point three million this year and we're expecting and hoping to get eight point two million next year. And that is both to invest in Leeds priorities, but also to invest in the national priority, which is numbers in treatment. That's the key ministerial priority from that money. And as a result of that money, that additional investment in Leeds, we've been able to get new posts. So I'm a new head of service, hence not knowing how to work the microphones. But we've also got new posts in due diagnosis, in recovery, posts in the hospitals and posts in family court. And we've got additional treatment places because of that new money. And in addition, we've got a new service. So we've got a service for prescription-only medicine and over-the-counter medicine. So that will help those people who may have inadvertently developed dependence on medicines containing codeine, for example, that you know, just the normal things that people have in their bathroom cabinet that are unfortunately addictive. So that's aimed for those people who may not consider themselves to have an addiction, but who will need some support. We've got Care Quality Commission outstanding treatment service in Ford Leeds and they're a high-performing service. And we were very proud to have Professor Sir Chris Witty visit the service earlier this year, be very impressed with the service. We've had new pilots. So those two are talked about in the report. One is a Boovidil pilot, which is an injecting an injection of a long-acting opioid agonist. And what that does is it helps people who've got more complex lives, who maybe have more chaotic lives, like rough sleepers and sex workers. And it helps them engage in treatment and commit to treatment. And that's been already quite effective. And we've had another new pilot, which is about high-impact, high-dependency drinking. One in Hairhills, one in the city centre. The Hairhills pilot was incredibly effective, very proud of that. And we're hoping to use next year's money to continue. We've continued to do marketing campaigns on a number of different issues. Finally, the thing I'm most proud about, and I hope that you are proud too, members, is that Leeds is an inclusive recovery city where people can get well from substance misuse and they can stay well. I'll be going to the forwards Leeds graduation tonight to see people graduate from their treatments and start the recovery. And there'll be a national meeting of inclusive recovery cities at Five Ways today. And we've got recovery runners, we've got getting clean, we've got Five Ways service users, staff and volunteers. So I'm proud that Leeds is a place that you can recover from substance misuse and continue with your lives. Thank you.
Thanks, Magdalena. I'm going to cover the offending behaviours one on behalf of Claire, who's unfortunately can't make it today. So the reducing reoffending board, that's been in existence for a while. It was recently refreshed during two thousand and twenty-two. And there's much more emphasis now around that collaborative approach between the prison service and probation. Some of the members will be aware of the probation services and the changes both nationally and locally around that. They are definitely on the page now in terms of engagement and looking at this delivery plan. The reducing reoffending board has a delivery plan. It's a three-year plan. It aligns to the Yorkshire and Humber Ministry of Justice reducing reoffending plan. And going back to our colleagues from the Combined Authority, there's a really good detailed information in there from the Criminal Justice Board. So I'd recommend you read that if you haven't already read that. That link between the regional, sorry, the regional and local level is so important in terms of delivery and promotion. The key areas that they focused on this last twelve months has been particularly accommodation, which has been a key issue in terms of prisoner releases and making sure people have pathways into appropriate accommodation and the support to reduce their reoffending behaviour so they don't return to prison. We've made significant inroads on that this year in terms of that prison release planning into accommodation and strengthening that communication with partners across the piece. The education and training and employment sphere of work is very much still in development. There's some really good work from our third sector organisations who are actually promoting and doing, delivering some fantastic work in terms of getting offenders back into employment. As we know, that's the best way to help people move on in their lives. And that work is continuing with support from probation and other providers. And in terms of custody and real settlement pathway, this has definitely brought together a whole range of partners looking at strengthening that link from custody into community and ensuring there's a embedded resettlement kind of plan for individuals. And within that, we've got some innovative projects linked to recovery. One example is a CIC that's just been established in Leeds, supporting people who've come out of prison, who are in recovery and helping them to sustain and recover from substance misuse and seek employment. There is a separate work stream around women, which I'm pleased to say at a combined authority and the criminal justice level, they're leading on that. It's really important in terms of that accommodation pathway, that substance misuse and particularly the mental health pathway and support for women accessing that one-to-one kind of package and release. I'll pause there and I'll move on to Lucy, who's just going to try and cover the organised crime and street gang work. Thank you.
Can I, can I, sorry. I was expecting a few headlines as opposed to a comprehensive rundown of everything that's being delivered in the boards. I appreciate that there's nine boards and we've got halfway through and the members haven't had a chance to interact yet. So I'm sorry if it sounds a bit rude, but for the rest of the boards, could we have a few headlines so that we can get into discussion? Thanks, Lucy.
No problem, Chair. So we've obviously heard a lot from policing already this morning. In relation to organised crime and serious youth violence, there are some very definite overlaps, but there are obviously some differences. In relation to sort of our methodology and moving forward to tackling serious organised crime, what we're trying to do is bring this back to the locality and raise awareness of what serious organised crime is. Because this isn't all about firearm seizure or massive drug seizures. We've had some excellent work done in localities, for example, presenting sort of issue in Seacroft where there were some really vulnerable victims and it was organised crime by the very nature of the work that was done. So bringing it back into the locality and making people aware of what we can do to target serious organised, serious organised crime, we have changed the governance. Serious organised, serious organised crime. We have changed the governance arrangements for tackling both. Serious organised crime and serious, serious youth violence. So we've heard from the district commander about a new post that we've got. Developing through the front door safeguarding hub. We're also developing some much closer links with children's services. In relation to risk outside the home. So young people that are involved in this activity, be it serious youth violence or organised crime. And actually how our colleagues in children's can assist with this and moving downstream to where we can get to. In relation to the early intervention and prevention angles, because we are obviously seeing growing numbers in young people being involved in this activity. And how we can prevent them and divert them away from this type of activity. So obviously we've got lots of different plans. Programme precision is the West Yorkshire response to serious and organised crime. But we are working with the introduction of this new governance with locality meetings. So for elected members around the table, there will be three new meetings. That are set up. Where like I say, children's services, social, social care, police and third sector partners will all be sitting around the table. Looking at individuals, looking at families, looking at the family's first type principle and trying to work with individuals at a much earlier. Sort of occasion than having to go down the enforcement approach. So I don't know if you want any more detail with that or if you're happy with that overview because there's.
Very happy. No more detail at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chair. Thanks Lucy. We're on to seven. So we're nearly there. Exploitation and radicalisation. Thanks Nadine.
Thanks Simon. I will keep it brief Chair. People will know, hopefully colleagues will know, be aware of our work on Prevent. That's a national strategy to stop people becoming terrorists and supporting terrorism. We've been doing this work for over a decade. And I'll dive into straight away what we're most proud of in relation to this work. We are seen as a model of best practice nationally around this work. We're a constantly high performing area in terms of reducing vulnerabilities to radicalisation. We've been doing the work, like I say, for a number of years. We've been asked to chair national boards, such as Council Cooper's been asked to chair National SIGSS, Special Interest Group on Counter-Extremism. So we're very proud of that work. We know in Leeds that there are a range of risks, threats and vulnerabilities related to extremism and terrorism. And we work really closely with partners from counter-terrorism policing, local policing and a range of statutory and community partners to try and mitigate those risks and threats. It's a very contentious area of work is Prevent, as some of you may well be aware, but we've worked really closely with our communities to build confidence. In the agenda to the extent that we do now receive referrals to the channel panel from members of the public. And family members who are concerned about individuals within their communities or within their families that are vulnerable to radicalisation. And nationally, colleagues will tell you here from police that that is a very difficult barrier to overcome. So we're really proud that we're instilling confidence within communities around our work on Prevent moving forward. We do lots of work around training to upskill communities and third sector partners about some of the current risks and threats. An example of that is, you know, a new area of work around misogyny and the manosphere and the crossover into extremism, doing lots of innovative work on that. We've been to every single school in the city to deliver Prevent training and that has resulted again in confidence of the agenda. And what it's about and helping to improve referrals to the channel panel. I'll leave it there.
Thanks Nadine. I'm going to cover the complex needs. People with multiple disadvantage. So yeah, just in terms of the, we have a new homelessness and rough sleeping strategy. Members will be aware of that. We have a legal duty to do that. Within that, there is remains a commitment from the council around rough sleeping. This year, things I have been really proud of is sustaining the women only female emergency accommodation. I am absolutely proud that we as a city have a gender informed response to women who are homeless and rough sleeping in the city. We're one of the very few cities nationally that's doing that. And importantly, we have pathways out to support women so they don't return to the streets. The other thing I'm proud of is some innovation that we've done with the private sector, the local authority and the crypts. It's the Clarion Housing Modular Unit in Kirkstall on a huge housing estate that's being built. We've got nine people in there. We've already had some successes around individuals taking up employment who were former rough sleepers, a former offenders. Who have also been involved in substance misuse. So people have been taking up employment and actually they'll be first to be offered affordable housing on that site. That's innovative and we want to sustain that. Yeah, I'll park it on that one and I'll do the last one Chair. Lots in the report around violence and sexual crime, as you can see. We've got a new serious violence duty and that's also reflected in the Combined Authority's requirements. I just want to mention a couple of things. That I think as a city, we're really proud of is around the violence against women and girls agenda. We've done, taken things significantly forward in this last twelve months. The bits that I'm personally proud of is the work that the team, and it is a team effort, that I've done around the Safer Streets Fund. And the application in terms of early intervention and de-escalation on the street. Whether that's through our night marshals, through our women friendly night safe space and the continuation of work that we're doing around Ask for Angela. Chair, you'll have been invited to the Walk Safe launch, which is on the twenty ninth of September. This is again is an innovative kind of app for women to use so they feel safe on the streets, but it can be used for anybody. It's inclusive, it's for workers, residents and people who visit the city. So I'll park it there. Back to you Chair for questions.
Thank you very much. Members, questions for our experts. Counselor Harrington.
Okay, can I just say thank you to all of you for a really comprehensive report. There's a couple of questions that I have in a couple of areas. I think it was Jude that this one's going to come to first. So there's lots of stuff in there about domestic abuse and violence. There isn't any mention that I can see of any work being done with victims of coercive and financial abuse. And that is a major issue for a huge number of women across the whole of West Yorkshire and. York and other areas as well. So just interested to know if there's any work that's actually going on in that area. The other issue is, I can't remember who it was that spoke about it, but in the. You've said about processes being used at HMP Leeds for providing a better transition for release and support, money buddies etc. Can you confirm that that's also happening at Wielston and Wetherby because there are two other prison establishments in our area? And the third bit to do with that is about women and reducing female reoffending. So Aspen Grange and New Hall are the nearest prisons to this area. I'd like to just be reassured that there is cross border working on those because there will be women and girls from Leeds in those two establishments. Thank you.
Thank you and good questions in relation to particularly women offenders and sort of a more bespoke approach. Just in terms of responses around victims and coercive controlling behaviour and financial control. That's very much within the definition of domestic abuse. We've done lots of work around coercive controlling behaviour. We delivered significant training a couple of years ago. And you know, in terms of operation when we're dealing with domestic abuse cases through our multi-agentary arrangements, which is MARAC and DRAM, which is a daily arrangement. We always look at coercive controlling behaviour. And actually interesting, there's going to be a relaunch of the DASH risk assessment, which is the form that's used to address risk issues for victims and survivors. And some of those questions are more bespoke to that coercive controlling behaviour. And interestingly, response to the other questions around sort of prison sort of conversations. Yeah, the other prisons are included within the reducing reoffending plan. We've got prisons within that estate that we're working with. And then obviously we've got arrangements in place for female offenders that have been released from custody across those two prisons. And linking in with the Together Women Project, where we've got probation staff that are sited within those, that centre to ensure there's a response for women released.
Thank you very much.
Sir Khan.
Thank you. Can I also echo on the comprehensive reporting and thank you. My question is to Kevin actually. Kevin, thank you for your presentation. I know you've done quite a bit of work in North West, but I think you need to visit around East Leeds. We're having experienced quite a bit of issue around. Hair Hills, Bermitoffs and Kinney Betsey off around there. So I think the next, you know, is a visit for you around East Leeds. And just on the tasking meetings, that's really useful tool and board for elected members and partners to bring all different issues. For proper problem solving. But what tends to happen is it's the elected members bring issues for problem solving, but partners don't bring anything down the table. And I think it's a two way traffic. So both of us need to bring some, you know, issue and then the elected members get to know what the issues are in the ward. So that needs to happen. And the other one, Simon, on the offending, I was at the trustees meeting on Tuesday. And I was, it was brought to my attention. That we are rehousing ex-offenders in areas very, very sensitive. Such as, you know, we've got a community centre, then we house ex-offenders, then we've got senior old people's home. It doesn't go together really well. The ex-offenders do have a complex need and sport. And there when they see this council building sign outside, it's Lee City Council, but it's a community centre. The staff are getting really, really frustrated because they're not being trained to deal with these ex-offenders and we don't know what the crimes they have committed. When we're allocating the accommodation for ex-offenders, can I make sure, can I ask, you know, can you please make sure they don't get. Rehoused in those kind of locations where there's already deprivation, deprived area. You know, there's already issues taking place and we're rehabbing more and more problem in that area.
Thank you councillor. You're right. I am working with Inspector Ali Nichols and Richard Armstead for Leeds East. And we are currently reviewing our PSPOs for both Hair Hills, Bermentoffs, Gipton. And we're having a meeting actually on the twentieth, I think it is, in relation to developing a neighbourhood improvement partnership for Hair Hills. Which is going to be all encompassing following the model of Holton Moor. In relation to tasking, they're actually, we're trying to get away from a name because I came to it with it's tasking and it's actually, we're going to. We're going to look at the actual community safety meetings. So I'm working with Lucy and Pete Hall as the chief inspector in relation to how that's going to work better for us. In relation to how elected members can get to us at neighbourhood management group level. How it can then be escalated then to community safety meetings where we can start problem solving it with other partners bringing the stuff in. And then start using the ASB MARAC that we've had that we've never actually got to. So that's all written as a flow chart for it. I've had my first meeting with the inspectors and chief inspector. As soon as I can get, make that one of my other priorities, that will be looked at. But I think at the moment it's around about getting the problem solving right. Getting those actions and those tactical solutions that we need to put right. We've learnt a lot of Holton Moor, learnt a lot of Hyde Park and Armley. And those same stories are being looked at for Hair Hills and around those locations. So hopefully that's asked you for that. I can talk about sensitive lettings unless you're going to talk about it Simon. Sensitive lettings. You're going to do it, okay.
You can add to it. Help me out. Yeah, thank you councillor for the lettings around accommodation for former offenders. Yet it isn't easy. It is really difficult in terms of placement. I just want to reassure you. Both probation, housing and through our IOM colleagues, they do do risk assessments before they place anybody anywhere. If there is a new accommodation that we're looking at as part of my cohort people in terms of street population. We always do consultation with members around any new premises that are going to be put up in an area to see if there are any risks and threats as part of that. I think there is a wider issue here in terms of, we know in terms of housing, the pressure the city council is on. You know, we've got something like twenty eight thousand people who are on the homeless register. It's very difficult to find placements for people coming out of prison. There's a role there for our registered social landlords. There's a role there for the private sector, but obviously that comes with risk to them as well and I understand that. So it's not easier, but I understand where you're coming from and we do everything we can to reduce that risk and threat. If there is displacement behaviour as a consequence, I'll let Kevin pick that up in terms of an antisocial behaviour response.
Yeah, thank you Simon. So one of our key objectives is to make sure now that I'm moving towards a more holistic approach. I want everyone to know in West what's happening in East and everyone in East knows what's happening in South. So we understand the movement around the city, which is something we're really keen to do. There is, there is an application we've currently got in for some funding. And I don't, I can't really tell too much about it because we don't know if we're going to get it or not, but if we haven't, if we do get it, sorry. There is some work I'm looking at developing something around that, about sensitive letting, working with our colleagues in housing. And making sure that where we have offenders, we make sure it's the best place for them as well. Because sometimes we house people what's not good for them. One example is a chap that came with mental health issues. And he didn't need to be where he was need because there was lots of problems in that, in that community. So it's both ways. So there is a sensitive lettings policy. That I work with the housing team for. But if you've got any examples where you feel I can, I can look at those, please let me know and I'll incorporate it into the meetings I have.
Alton Anderson.
I'll just start by saying, the antisocial behaviour team that look after us in the outer North West are excellent. In terms of I need something, I can usually get it. And once I'm, I mean, you know, you've highlighted a whole raft of things. And I would back up what councillor Khan just said. I, I used to know more what was happening in the area, but since the, I know you don't like the word tasking meetings. But we don't get told this information anymore. Or when I do get told, the police won't tell me. But if I contact the ASB team, they'll give me a confidential briefing. So they do trust me to actually get hold of the information and not go around spreading it around the world. It just seems a bit peculiar that, you know, so that's, but my, my real point is, who should be, can. On behalf of the ASB team, can you contact all councillors and tell us what we should be reporting to the ASB team? And what we should be reporting to the police? Because ping pong is occurring very regularly. Where I raise an issue with the police and the police will say, no, no, that's up to the ASB team. Very rarely is it the other way around. To be quite frank, I contact the ASB team. What the ASB team will probably say is, well, I'll contact the police on your behalf. So that's, you get the intent there. But the most important point is. There's a big problem occurring with registered social landlords on new estates. Where antisocial behaviour is occurring both from the tenants and to the tenants by owner occupiers. And there doesn't seem to be a mechanism in place for dealing with that. Because it's meant to go to the internal RSL for them to deal with. And we need to, I think, develop a policy as to how we can work for that. But it's becoming more and more of a concern. More and more of my casework is actually. RSL tenants complaining about residents or residents complaining about the RSL tenants. And because of the pepper potting. You, you find someone's just spent a million pounds on a house, the next thing they know is they've got a tenant behind them. And the interaction between the two, each complain about each other's behaviours to be quite frank. And it's how we sort those out. Thank you.
If I can pick them up in a couple of things. So I'm glad that you're getting really good service from our North West team councillor. I know that we've also got a meeting between yourself and I and Mark Ireland from the private sector to discuss your RSL issues that you brought to this scrutiny board. There are some issues in relation to how we interact to our RSLs. So the registered social landlords can opt in or out of some of the processes that we work around. I lead on the ASB review process to the ASB Crime and Policing Act. They can opt in or out of that. Currently, we've got thirteen that have opted in, which is really positive. My next task is to the other twenty to opt in and then I'll be really, really happy. But right now we do have good conversations with them. I look forward to meeting you. We will start talking around about a policy or a process at least, not a policy, but a process of how we can make sure that we support our RSL colleagues. And ensure that they've got the same backup that LazBatt have and housing team have. Quite a lot of the RSLs are coming to us now for advice and guidance, which is really, really nice. But, but I'm also looking at how they can support us as well in how we do that for them. In relation to elected members, it's really, really good that you've brought this up because I spoke to Mr Money around about two weeks ago in one of my managers' meetings where I said. Counselor Jenkins has brought an issue to me and it's a really, really good idea. And what Counselor Jenkins has said is I'd really like to have an elected member protocol. When we report, when we don't report, who do we report to? How do we signpost? What do we ask our constituents so they get a quicker service? So what will happen is, and I know it's the best way sometimes because you haven't got that protocol is. LazBatt triage will get an email into LazBatt members saying I've got a neighbour's reporting this. Well, if we have a few questions beforehand, maybe we already know about it and we can inform you straight away rather than going to the customer backwards. So that's on my radar. I'm going to meet with Counselor Jenkins. He's really. rather than going to the customer backwards. So that's on my radar. I'm going to meet with councillor Jenkins. He's really up for it to bring this protocol together. I think once we've got that, I'll send it out to committee champions and committee committees and obviously lead elected members and sit in the scrutiny board so you can share it around as well. So hopefully that that's going to be done. I'm aiming for that to be done by end of November.
Councillor Hannan.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um just two things um that's come to my attention. Um councillor Cooper mentioned earlier that there's a bit of overlap in some of the work that you do with the police. And um I just want to finish off talking about tagging and graffiti. Um does the council have a anti-graffiti strategy or policy? If so, who does it sit with and is it time for a review? Um if somebody could answer that question, please. And um a point that you brought up, Kevin, sorry, it seems that you're be, you're on the spot today. Um you mentioned earlier Ottley Run, um which affects my ward and the Weetwood Ward and some parts of Little London and Woodhouse. Um you said things are happening and things are working well. Um I've got inbox of people saying there's issues, there's problems, what's happening? Um can you elaborate on the things that you said are working well? And how is this going to be communicated to the people of concern? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. It's really interesting about the tagging. Um there is a policy in relation to tagging, but it's around about the use of the tagging and and the effect it has on the wider community. So there is a process in relation to cleaning up offensive. And we've got a duty of care to remove within seven working days, that's what it says. That's monitored by and and administered by our clean neighbours teams. Um linked in with our Leeds Watch teams, linked in with LazBatt, linked in with housing, linked in with localities. So those five different teams talk to each other and 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 do that. There is those difficulties. Um I think you're probably right. It might be something I I'll put on my radar maybe for when I get some chances, but I think moving into the new year next year, I think, into January, I think we may have some more headway on that. And let's start with run. Um when we put that PSPO in place, we did it jointly with the police and I'm so pleased that we can only do a PSPO if our colleagues in the police support us with it because we have no powers to administer, to issue it because you have to get someone's name and address. And the only people can do that is the police. The MPT, uh I've done a lot of work where we've had days of action. We've issued five fixed points notices already in that location where people have received a hundred pound. We've also given out sixteen different warnings where people have left the area because they know that they're going to end up with a hundred pound fine. What I will say on the back of that PSPO is in the current government action plan that should be heard in this year into next year, there are some uh movement in increasing that hundred pound to five hundred pound. Because be honest with you, one person did say to us, it's worth a hundred quid to have a laugh. Well, that's not how this should be used. This is around about a a proper deterrent. Um so I think what we will do is, we we we're still in that, when I say honeymoon period, in that period where we're looking at how it works. John McInnes is driving from the front. What I'm looking at now and what people are telling me when I go into public meetings is you don't tell us enough. Um I can go back to the motorbike one where uh someone, a victim's actually come to me and said, oh, this works great, Kev, but no one's telling us. I went, right, I get it now. So I'm going to start going to Metro News, I'm going to start going to anyone and saying, I want to put this in, this is a good news story. Ottley Run should be a massive. So our comms strategy now is going to move forward with the police. Uh obviously, knowing the police, uh media, uh Lee Tony and Kim in our side, I'm saying to them, how do we publicise this? How do we make more effective use? Uh so like going up to bonfire night, we're going to start looking at geofencing and sending text messages out. There's some really innovative work being done. Uh so hopefully that's answered that question for you.
Thank you. Um given the level of interest on the graffiti issue and the desire to create some kind of innovative joint working, um I I think the scrutiny board will be intending to produce something bespoke to look at this this year. Just for your information that we hope you'll get positively involved by the sounds of it. Um now we have councillor Blackburn next.
Thank you. Um first of all, um can I join others in and saying what a really good report this was? And I think it's one of the best ones I've seen for a long time and uh and very informative. Um I'll I'll chair, uh I'll just mention tasking meetings. Uh uh my my view of tasking meetings is the same as councillor Anderson's. Uh they are not as good as their ones were, uh and we aren't getting the information there that we should be getting. But uh let's put it this way, uh if we keep working on it, working on the police, we'll get, I think we're getting somewhere. But the fact is, there's too many things being kept from us and and we're not being informed and we can be very helpful to that process. Um but um well, let's ask a question about you. You've got the uh shared priority number four and it's only because uh I sit on um uh children and family scrutiny board and we're doing an inquiry. And it says about illicit drugs and substance use. Um are we doing anything to do with vaping by children at um at school age? Uh and before you answer the question on that as well, I'm happy to see uh that you are doing something for prescribed uh prescribed drugs. As somebody who is currently having the take a code of all, uh I can understand how somebody gets addicted to that for no fault of their own. So I'm I'm glad you're doing that.
Can I just intercede? I've been given some information. Uh there is another scrutiny board which is doing a bespoke piece of work on vaping, which has been um what's the word, paused uh because of noises coming from government that they will be announcing something around that. So um I I would assume your interests could be focused on on that one if we don't get anything more conclusive today. Sorry, back to our expert.
Uh well, I was just going to tell the members that's that's what I was aware as well. Um Emma.
Heather Thompson.
Heather Thompson in um Tobacco and Control had a service. She's leading on that piece of work, councillor, around the vaping. If you want to touch base with her in terms of what what the plans are moving forwards. Yeah, thank you.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um and thanks, everyone, as colleagues have said, for an excellent uh report. It's been very informative. Um Kevin, can I just recall my thanks to the um graffiti removal service in relation to offensive graffiti? I've had occasion to report some of that recently and it was dealt with double quick, double quick, which I'm very grateful for. Uh one question arising from your remarks earlier, uh perspective on who's actually responsible for for this? And uh you do seem to have some pretty good ideas on it. I'm not after names, obviously, but you mentioned uh that uh it's predominantly people who live locally. A view I have heard from the uh police in the past is that what is often sort of uh pe- uh people that tend to assume it's youngsters and it's students and that's rarely the case. And what's been mentioned is blokes in their thirties who frankly should know better, uh who may, yeah, uh live a good distance away. Um are you aware of any of that? Do you think that is a fact there? Thank you.
Yep, back on. Yes, we are aware of it, councillor. It's uh it is one of those things that we we can't share too much information about. However, um the DS one dedicated service out there is doing that that preventative role. What I want to do now is, we've come to the end of year two into year three, and we'll be looking at looking at crime stats as well against what was in two thousand nineteen to where we are now, because that tagging's actually come down. Um we're we're not seeing much new go up. I know it doesn't look like that, but it starts off with like a nice mural that someone puts up. Then everyone's, it's what they call the broken window theory. Someone puts something on it, everyone uses that wall because no one's stopping them from doing it. It's difficult for the police to deal with it because you've got to identify user. It is criminal damage. For criminal damage, you need a complainant. If the customer owns owns the house, doesn't want to make a complaint, there's not a lot we can do. Uh while it's a security uh ASB issue for us, we're trying to intervene by having that patrol out there and reporting back. And then I try to identify who's doing it. And the potential is, is people in their thirties. I'm not convinced people are driving into Hyde Park and Headingly from elsewhere to do graffiti unless they're coming like the, you get other taggers that do travel around the country. But generally, I I'm also, there is a national tagging database, believe it or not. Uh I can't tell you where it is, but I look at it and I make sure that I look at that in association with what tags we've got. So Leeds Watch will go out. They'll take a small photograph for me, something new. I look at it and think, no, that's that's not a national thing. That's not someone outside. We just need to try and catch people and it's so difficult to do. But I think the onus is on the people who are on the premises. And I think that's what I'd like to work from the other side and say this is your responsibility, your wider community to have your premises in a in a nice condition.
We, can we take this in the group that we're going to be setting up going forward? Because we've we've given it a good airing today. I think I think that the graffiti issue. Councillor Acta.
Chair, just a final point with regards to the tagging and and the graffiti and yeah, yeah, but I just just wanted to uh ask um the chair and the board members before meeting uh to discuss the graffiti and tagging issue. Can I invite members and the officers to come and witness uh in Hyde Park the the misery the people live through? That probably will make it a lot easier for members and the officers to answer any questions.
Thank you for the suggestion. Uh councillor McCluskey.
Uh thank you, Chair. Kevin, I'm sorry to you again. Um you raised about the citywide vehicle nuisance and I raised earlier about the racing, nightly racing we have in Farnley and Warkley. And am I reporting or encouraging the residents to do wrong thing by reporting to the police? Is it an antisocial behaviour thing? Or is it both? Or is it the safer roads? I'm just confused. I'm new.
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, well, this is the ideal thing that we're going to develop for you is that protocol, a future report pro when, who to and when. Um so the first response to any road traffic situation would be the police who would then make the assessment through a thrive-based threat harm risk and they would deploy if they felt needed to. I think the wider long-term problem solving solutions around this PSPO and also the um um around the um in- information that we get in into it and how we highlight it. What I have done is is so you know that we need to gather the intelligence about where they are and and get some details. So part of the strategy is around a building in that reporting process. So give you a simple example is Lee City Council have an online reporting function in Real Garden ASB. And inside there it will say vehicle misuse. So customers can click that and then what my triage team will do, they'll either go to the police partners and say, we've got another one of these, if we've got an active case, or we will submit it through the police intelligence portal. What I want to do is develop a a councillor's intelligence portal as well, so councillors can put intelligence in when they get it. Uh so the police can build that picture up because there's there's any finite resources, we we need to make sure the right people at the right place at the right time. And now we've seen the 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 scope of it, we've got five hotspot locations, which I won't tell you where they are now, but there is five hotspot locations that we are, we've identified and we're proactive looking at those. So intelligence is is tell us where they are and then we can start looking at how we can respond as a partnership.
Good. Right, I'm going to draw the graffiti discussion to a conclusion. Um I have a couple of other areas which are related. Um first of all, there was the issue that we've had, which is a golden thread around um our neighbourhood policing teams, um the and the deployment within them and their accessibility. I think it would be quite useful as well because we've also seen headlines, whether it's been released by government or whether it's been released by the Maryland Authority about uh people being employed, uh new officers, new police staff. Um and I think it would be really useful for us as elected members to understand um what the neighbourhood policing teams look like at the moment and what they will look like in twelve months' time in terms of PCs and PCSOs that are associated with them, because I think that will give greater clarity to to what we hope to achieve in partnership. Uh and then the second thing uh was around the equalities um and hate crime agenda. Um because there was talk about how some hate crime is reducing, but other hate crime is going up. Um and we do know that antisemitism, for instance, is on the increase, but that rise might be masked by different um equality characteristics offenses lowering. Um also, there's a note around disability hate crime. And I think rather than just measuring offences or complaints, it would be also very good to us to understand the environmental um cons- not consequences, um situation um when these complaints are being made. It would be really useful, uh because we talked earlier around where we can encourage responsibility to be taken up by partners. It would be really useful to know whether these hate crimes are taking place in work, whether they are taking place where people live and it's primarily a neighbour dispute, whether it is um issues around, for instance, um being out on the public highway and you're a disabled person and someone's parked on the pavement. It would be really useful to understand the context of where conflict is occurring so that we can all play our part as non-police partners to try and have an effect on that. So it'd be really useful to to get a perspective from that, from you, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we, that's something we can certainly do a deep dive on and try and get you some more information around that. What we've been doing over the last twelve months is look, is doing a deep dive on protected characteristics. So rather than looking at um hate crimes as much from a geographic perspective, for example, or an overall perspective, looking into the different characteristics and and hate crime strategic board have been receiving some information around that at their last few meetings now. Um I certainly think we can overlay that with the locational stuff. I mean, there is some information already around that. So what I would say is that um particularly with higher profile incidents that happen, there's a lot of background work that goes on to understand the context of that. And we get those irregularly. Um but I think there's certainly value in terms of looking at some of those strands that you've just mentioned in terms of, for example, parking disputes or stuff that's happening in green space. And there is already some work, for example, I work in the colleagues in the NHS uh in terms of the, you know, the impact of hate crime on on staff. Um uh uh in some of their challenging environments. So we could pull something together and and give a little bit of a targeted update on that if that's useful.
Sorry, that was very useful for me. I don't know about the other board members. Do you? Yes. Good. That's good to hear. Thank you. Um final question from councillor Khan.
Yeah, just following from you, Chair, on the hate crime. Uh Jeff, normally, and the people who experience hate crime is from people with BAME background and people with disabilities. And they definitely need extra help to report uh the incident. And what sport are there in place for those uh groups or people reporting to increase the reporting of hate crime? Just, and I know you've got online some people, uh as their English is not their first language and reporting online is difficult for them. Uh and just reporting what other methods are there available for uh anybody who's experienced hate crime?
Uh so councillor Khan, um as well as the online functionality that we have, I mean, obviously, first and foremost, the police are there for those who wish to 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 speak to the police, but that's face to face, um by speaking to them over the telephone, et cetera. And they will obviously provide a lot of wraparound support for people who want to directly contact the police. Where it is third party, so people for whatever reason don't feel comfortable directly approaching um the police. Um as a local authority, we have a contract with Stop Hate UK, who are Leeds-based um national organisation. And they provide us functionality around that, as well as having online, they also have telephone accessibility. So they will speak to people and do a deep dive into what's happened and the and as part of that conversation, the support element's really important. They also have the functionality um to deal with people who, where English isn't the first language. Obviously, some people would prefer to come face to face and I think it's really important to recognise that. So the work we've referenced around expanding some of our third-party reporting centres, there's going to be a particular focus on um some of the protective characteristics and some communities. So there could be some faith groups, for example, where there's a demand and a need for that. And there could be some parts of the city as well and working with some particular communities. I I could say, for example, new migrants to the city would be one area where you're going to be faced particularly with challenges um around English language and also scepticism about dealing with the criminal justice system potentially because of the countries that they've come come from. the countries that they've come from. So that works ongoing at the moment. If you have any particular suggestions, we'd very much welcome that. Obviously, we're working through hate crime strategic board and the operational group with all the partners to identify some of those locations. But yeah, absolutely, I would agree that extra support is needed by some groups more than others and we're, we're definitely working through that at the moment.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your attendance for that item. It's much appreciated. And once again, I might have tried to cut you short earlier, but we do appreciate all that you do. And I know that you want to celebrate all the hard work that does happen within the teams that you head. So thank you for all your work. And we'll go on to our final item, which is our work schedule. Becky Atherton.
And just to ask members very quickly, note the work schedule for the upcoming year. Let me know if there's any amendments you'd like to make. You're also reminded there's a remote budget briefing for all scrutiny members on the twenty first of September. And finally, there are three member development sessions coming up, which members of this board might be interested in on enforcement and contaminated land, biodiversity net gain and landscape planning and trees in the context of climate change. You should all receive an invitation from the member development team, which is one for you to look out for.
Thank you. And thank you for your continued concentration through a very long meeting. Thanks.
Thanks, Gary.